Good evening. It's always good to start the meeting on time. So that's what we're going to do. I'm Diane Owens and I am with the American Association of University Women and I am your moderator tonight. So I want to thank all of you for coming tonight. I know you could have been someplace else. The Emmy, let's see, the Emmys are on and there is a concert and you could have been just home with your pajamas on and your slippers on and just having a good time. So thank you for coming out. I really appreciate that, that so many people are interested in what's happening with the elections this year and hopefully everybody is, has everybody registered to vote?
Yes.
Good, good, good. Because if not, we do have some pamphlets back here so that you can register to vote online. So we do have some instructions there. But if you've already registered to vote, that is really, really great. First of all, I want to thank the city of Lompoc for allowing us to use the chambers tonight. This is a wonderful place because Tap TV is here and they are taping this. It's actually being livestreamed tonight and then it will be shown later on, on the cable network. And also, I guess it'll be on the radio, so that is good. And I want to thank all of our candidates for coming tonight. So we appreciate that very much. And while we're, when I'm asking the questions and doing all this, if you want to stand and you think the mics will pick, you know, pick up your voice, you're welcome to stand because you're not up high. You're down on the same level as the audience. So if you want, if you choose to stand, just pull your mic up so that you can, everybody can hear you. And the light, you have to turn on your microphones. So those of you that are on the console already, you already know that. The rest of you, you be sure that the green light is showing and that way your voice will come through. So tonight, we are talking about districts. And this is the first time that we've had a district election in Lompoc and in many cities, actually. So it's going to be a little bit different for the moderator. So we, I have everybody seated here. First, the two mayoral candidates, then the two candidates for the second district and the two candidates for the third district. So you can kind of get used to the fact that these are the district people. So that'll help you a little bit. We have maps back here in case you haven't memorized all that yet, right? We have some maps back there to help you so that you can do that. So this will be the first time that we're voting that way. And I want to tell you a little bit about AAUW. This is kind of just a 30-second commercial. But we've been doing these types of forums for over 50 years. The branch was formed in 1964 and we started right away. There wasn't a league of women voters here and so we took over and we had the, we decided that we would do the forums. Now, the people that you see here tonight aren't the ones that did them 50 years ago, but, but, but they started the tradition and we're carrying it on. So we're really happy about that. AAUW is a nonpartisan organization. We do support all kinds of issues that deal with things that we're interested in, but we do not support candidates. So I want to be sure to let you know that one of our members is a candidate tonight. Janelle Osborne is one of our members. So we want to be sure that you know that. But AAUW is not supporting her. What members do on their own is fine, whatever they want to do, but the organization is not supporting any candidates. We do have a membership table back here and if anybody's interested in learning more about AAUW, you need to be either a four-year graduate or a two-year graduate to join. But we have information back here and you're always welcome to come to our meetings anytime. So just be sure you do that. Our mission is to advance gender equity for women and girls through research, education, and advocacy, and that's what we do. So, thank you, everybody, for coming and I'm going to introduce our members tonight and then we're going to start with the questions. So I'm going to introduce James Mosby and Janelle Osborne. They're running for the mayor's position. In the second district, we have Victor Vega and Shirley Sherman. And for the third district, we have Robert Cuthbert and Dirk Starbuck. So those are our candidates that are going to be talking tonight. I'm going to ask them four questions. And then we have a fifth question, which is the final question, that they do not know about. So it's sort of a surprise. So we'll see. Okay. So I'm going to tell you what the format is for tonight. And it's a little hard to read, isn't it? But anyway, a little bit late. But anyway, each candidate's going to make a two-minute introductory statement and the order that they're sitting was determined by drawing. I'm going to ask the questions and they're going to respond to the questions for no more than two minutes. And our timers are right down here. Janet and Morrell are timing. They'll show you, when you have 30 seconds left, they'll show you this sign. When you have to stop, we'll show you that sign, okay? So the audience won't see it, but the candidates can see it. So the questions will be alternated between the candidates and this will be a little bit of a trick. I did this once with about 12 candidates, I think. And I thought I'd probably get mixed up with that, but it worked pretty well. I didn't get mixed up too often, so we'll see. It should work better with six, but we'll see how that works. So the, in the interest of time, we're not allowing any rebuttals tonight, but if you want to re, you know, if you want to rebut one of the answers that somebody gave, you can use some of your next two minutes to do that. We're going to break for about 10 minutes and then you can give your questions to the forum committee and they'll be up here in the front. And so you can bring your questions up here. We'll look through them and then we'll have everybody come back and we'll ask as many questions as we can before eight o'clock. Okay. And then at the, and the answers for the questions will be one minute. So you only have one minute to answer the questions. And the questions, we've told everybody as they came in, that they can either address it to one candidate or to everybody. And each candidate will have a one-minute closing statement. So you, hopefully. Okay. So, are you ready? Here we go. So we're going to have the opening statements, the two-minute statements, and we'll start with James Mosby.
First of all, I want to, for full disclosure, I'm not a member of AAUW.
You could be.
Just wanted to get that out there. And I want to thank the AAUW for having us here and everybody else giving their evening up and joining us. For putting on this forum according with all the candidates. With respect to me, it's been an honor to serve the people of Lompoc for the past six years. First as a city utility commissioner and then as a member of Lompoc City Council. During my tenure, I've had the distinct privilege of being the city's appointment to the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments, Air Pollution Control District, Central Coast Collaborative on Homelessness, as well as the Santa Barbara County Parks Fourth District Commissioner. I've worked hard for the residents of Lompoc and I've been willing and able to ask the tough questions and devote the time necessary to understand the difficult issues facing local government today. I've been an advocate for full public access to government, decision-making, and transparency, fiscal responsibility, and a thorough vetting of dense staff reports on complex subjects. I've worked to develop the level of mutual respect and understanding between myself, other council members, and city staff.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Oh, I forgot, no applause.
Sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, I have it right here, but there's no applause. We're going to save our applause and I'll tell you when you can applaud, okay? Okay. I know you're going to get so excited, but, okay. Okay, Ms. Osborne.
Thank you, AAUW, for hosting this nonpartisan public forum and providing our residents an opportunity to hear from all our council members, current candidates, and mayor candidates. My name's Janelle Osborne. My husband and I chose Lompoc as our home 18 years ago. Living in Lompoc has opened so many doors for us and I feel it's important to return the gift to the community I love by running for mayor, as so many of you have asked me to do. Being on the Economic Development Committee for four years and then elected to council in 2016 has been eye-opening. Learning Lompoc's history, listening to our diverse population's concerns, and discovering how valuable our full-service city is to the success or failure of our residents and businesses motivates me to work hard for everyone. As your mayor, I want to conduct respectful council meetings, encouraging all voices to participate, represent the community positively with decorum, and honor the council city manager administration. Since Lompoc's mayor has no formal authority outside the council, the mayor cannot directly appoint or remove officials and lacks veto power over council votes. It also means the mayor does not have sole administrative authority. This structure is supposed to eliminate abuse of administration and budget by a single individual since it requires a majority decision to direct staff and budget. Understanding and respecting our government structure, engaging the entire population in policy and budget discussions, and being ethical in the process are my commitments to you when you select me as your next mayor. Simply asking the tough questions is theater, especially when it's not followed by effective leadership.
Thank you. Mr. Vega.
It's a pleasure to be here in front of you. After almost four years, it's been quite an ordeal and I tell you, it's been very heartwarming. Many of you have come up and understand some of the hardships some of us face. I began learning about how the city operates as a Public Safety Commission member for four years. Over those years, I learned how the police and fire departments worked and what improvements they needed to be more effective. When I decided to run for city council, I began attending city council meetings regularly for more than a year. I also read staff reports and asked questions about reports, about the reports. With that background, I felt qualified to run for city council and was elected in 2014. Since being elected, I have learned a great deal of how the city operates and always voted for the best interests of Lompoc residents. Last year, after the previous city manager proposed a budget with millions in new spending and three tax increases, I worked along with council members and the staff to create a balanced budget. I voted not to increase taxes and I voted not to take city funds away from the police victims' advocate group, school crossing guards, the museum, the Flower Festival Parade, Old Town Market, and many more nonprofit activities where the city manager had proposed not to fund. I said no to closing two city parks. In the end, we passed a balanced budget with no new tax increases. This year, to keep utilities affordable, I voted not to raise water rates. The water utility had already had $7 million in reserve with the city council's set reserve requirement of only $3 million. I voted no on a trash collection increase for the same reason. To improve public safety, the council and I voted to make six positions in the fire department and three in the police department that had been funded by grants, by the grants permanent and fully funded. I have consistently voted to bring new housing projects to Lompoc so that affordable homes are available. This will stop the huge increases in home prices and rents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. Okay, Ms. Sherman.
Can you hear me? Okay. Well, I'm kind of new at this. So I have to thank the AAUW for hosting this event and allowing all of us to express our concerns about the future of Lompoc. I'm inspired about how this group has empowered women in general. My name is Shirley Sherman and why I'm running for city council is because I'm concerned about the way this district is going. Let me tell you a bit about myself. I was born in the UK. I moved to Canada when I was three and at the age of 48, I moved to the United States. Well, I got my citizenship in 2018 and I'm darn proud of it. I'm able to vote and I consider civic duty a major responsibility of most people, but a lot of people don't really give a darn about it. Outside of that, if I'm elected, my top three priorities are public safety, community beautification, and investment in Lompoc. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. Okay. Mr. Cuthbert.
My name's Robert, pardon me. My name's Robert Cuthbert and I'm here once again. I was kind of accused by a local newspaper of being the perennial candidate and I want to insist that in between every election, I actually did things for the community except for the last five years. I took a hiatus from almost anything political. Before that, I was 10 years president of a local Democratic Party. Right now, I'm an independent and I'm an independent because that's what the people of Lompoc want. And I'm also convinced that there is no issue facing the city now that needs to be a partisan issue. I'm not answering to the Democratic Party. I'm not answering to the Republican Party. I'm answering to the people of the city of Lompoc. I was 10 years on the Public Safety Commission, which was a great learning experience. I made the, I helped bring the commission to a higher level of visibility and credibility in the community and a functional part of the city council, a lot of their decisions. We championed quite a number of causes on behalf of fire and police. And I'm here today in part because I'm very distraught about being short nine officers on the police department and the fire department may be facing some very serious cuts. And so when we talk about economic development in this community, one of the things we really need to talk about is how new companies coming into this community are going to feel. We live, live here, we love the place, but you know, our infrastructure is falling apart, our alleys and streets are getting dirtier. I'm saying the same thing I did like 10 years ago and let's get back to basics government, look at the things we need, serve the people's basic needs, and not fly off in other directions. My name's Robert Cuthbert, candidate for Lompoc City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Cuthbert. Mr. Starbuck.
Thank you, Diane. My name's Dirk Starbuck. I just wanted to say that normally I get up in front of the podium and speak, but because of the journalist and the low mic, I will stay seated. I was made in and raised in Lompoc. I'd left in, when I was 18. Been here my whole life at that point. I married my high school sweetheart and we took off, joined the Navy, and we went everywhere in the world. Where'd we come back to? You know it, Lompoc, it's the water, right? Well, I've been self-employed now for a little over 20 years, have my own business, my own shop, and enjoy what I do and I really am happy about my decision to come back. A couple of points, why are you running again? I'm going to say that I'd like to ensure that the city lives within its means. The demographics here, we've got to change them eventually. We talked about public safety. I witnessed a stabbing across the street from my shop last Monday. Gangs, theft, it's happening here. We can't bury our head in the sand with it and I see it every day where my shop is located. One of the key issues that happens that's very concerning to me is the fact that I have a lot of my grandkids here, my kids, and there's nowhere for my people to live in this town. They have been displaced and replaced and we can't continue doing that, but we'll discuss that later. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. Okay. We're ready for question number one. Now, I want to let the audience know that the candidates have had these questions ahead of time, so they, they're prepared for the first four, right, first four questions. Okay, the first question, we're going to start with District Two on this question and we'll start with Mr. Vega. Since this is the first district city council election in Lompoc, please describe the demographics of the district you are running for and tell us the three most pressing issues. What are your plans to get the pulse of your district and how will you address the issues that you have identified? And we'll start with Mr. Vega.
First of all, I've lived in District Two all my life, so this is the magic number and the magic area for me to actually help improve that area. My district is comprised of moderate and fixed income residents. They reside in older established neighborhoods containing a mix of single-family homes and high-density apartments. Many of these are in excess of 50 years old and have deferred maintenance, which is the byproduct of many people on fixed incomes with no extra money to enhance the aging The mirrors, in fact, this mirrors, in fact, that even on the city level, money has been so slim that there simply isn't enough to go around and bring the streets in my district up to par as the funds are spent on our main streets. Walking through my district, I have learned that the family dynamics has been affected by the stress of utility rate increases and rent increases. The residents all cited the same stress and concern. The rising costs have led to overwork in their efforts to enhance their family's quality of life. Because of the need to work more hours to make ends meet, residents have said there's less time to spend at home with their children. In my district, more code enforcement citations are issued because income is too sparse to fund the deferred maintenance. I believe many, if not all, of the residents in my district would love to improve their properties if household income could be raised. This can be done if the city works to increase the availability of quality jobs in Lompoc. City income has been increased since the economic downturn of 2008 by bringing new businesses and jobs to Lompoc. The city must accelerate its efforts to bring new, good-paying jobs to Lompoc. To attract companies, we must also have new homes for the staff they bring to Lompoc. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Shirley. It's, you can answer the same question.
Okay, well, may as, may I say, as a member of the working community, I understand budgeting. I have the same concerns as my neighbors. As I walk around the streets, I'm hearing things that just scare the heck out of me. Public safety is number one. I hear people that say, "I don't want to walk the streets at night. It's not safe." I hear people that say, "Don't go over there, to that part of the city, because there's a lot of bad stuff going on. We shouldn't have to do, we shouldn't have to hear that stuff." On my street alone, I personally experienced a stabbing, a car on fire, a shooting, and also a lockdown. In my district, what gives? What's going on with that? I don't understand that. I do understand that the police and the fire departments need more funds for more people, more equipment, but where do we get that money from? That's another issue. Also, I've heard, walking the community, I hear from people saying like, "Our sidewalks are terrible. We have weeds. We have code enforcement not going on. We've got, we've got sidewalks that are trip hazards. How do we pay for that?" That leads to our third problem, income. Where do we get the money to pay for that? And unfortunately, that is a big issue in our community. So I don't have the resolve on that. I don't know all the issues, but that's all I will say about that for now. I love my city, I love where I live, but we have a lot to deal with. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Cuthbert.
So the third district is basically the southeast quarter of the city. It starts at North Avenue, goes to the hills, the riverbed, and then it kind of snakes up D Street. It's basically a working-class neighborhood. There's a lot of homes with homeowners and there's a, there's a good amount of rental units. There's not a lot of businesses that you see in the downtown area, but we do have the wineries. We have the hospital district in the district. And talking about the three core issues that we have, homelessness is where, in the riverbed, is right next to the third district. And it's, they cross there and they also access service, resources like water and electricity. They plug into plugs in public areas and so forth. Incidentally, the sweep, I've noticed a large decline in the homeless people coming there. And I'll get more into that later, but another problem is code enforcement in this city. It's driven by complaint only and it's not been very effective. We have a lot of people who are, would probably be much more responsible if there was a little bit of pressure through code enforcement and potential fines to start cleaning up their alleys, especially in their streets. There's, in my district, and you see this throughout the city, there's certain neighborhoods that are very, very nice and then you get to another neighborhood and there's weeds everywhere and it's just, so getting back to economic development, we want economic development, we want people to move here. We want the, the small-time CEOs and executives to want to come here and create jobs. And one way to do that is code enforcement. And again, public safety. Every day, I'm hearing very bad stories. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Starbuck.
The demographics, I'm going to say, were all citizens of Lompoc. When we divided the city into fourths, it was done with trying to keep the demographics at a balance. There's a little bit heavier Hispanic in three and two than there is in the other two districts, but that was to try and concentrate the Hispanic vote to enable the vote. Pressing issues in the district itself are pretty much pressing issues throughout the city. The only one that's really unique to the district is the riverbank stabilization, which is a huge project that has actually started and is ongoing right now. If the river was to wash out the bank and then the bike path and then, it's in your front yard if you're on Riverside Drive. Vigorancy and theft is huge in that district as it is everywhere in town. So, but it did probably stem mainly from people that were living in the riverbed. Parks, Pioneer Park is the only park in that area and it's probably one of the last parks that's getting its attention as a ballfield goes, but like all the parks in town, it needs attention, but that's one that's next in line for District Three.
Okay. Thank you. Now I have a special question for the two mayoral candidates. Describe the demographics and issues of the city as a whole and the three most pressing issues as you see them for the entire city. Okay, we'll start with Mr. Mosby.
Yeah, let me just answer one of the first things that was kind of put up about code enforcement and for those out there, we do spend close to, or a little bit over a quarter million dollars a year on code enforcement. So it is a program that's, that's well-funded. But now looking at the demographics of the city, some astonishing numbers, I came about. One is our current poverty levels are at 20.2%. In the seventies, we had poverty levels at about 12%. So we have to say we're going in the wrong direction. The three most pressing issues are, number one, jobs; number two, housing, and the imbalance of that. With no new housing construction, the fact that if you have a job in Lompoc, there's a 60% chance that you're commuting for that job. In the nineties, only 40% had to commute for that work. Again, we're going in the wrong direction. The other significant problem is that many of our people are living on fixed incomes, yet we still see the government taking more from the people who have no more to give. Recently, three of us on council said no to new taxes and no to water rate increases. New taxes are not a sustainable way to balance a budget. How do you get money from people who don't have it? We must bring new and better jobs to Lompoc, more housing. We must raise everybody's standard of living, not just the city's general fund. We must advance the whole economy of Lompoc. For more information, go to my webpage, mosbyformayor.com.
Thank you, Mr. Mosby. Ms. Osborne.
As of our last census, Lompoc demographics are 51% Hispanic, 38% non-white Hispanic, 5% African-American, and 4% Asian-American. Less than half the majority votes are involved in our city government. Additionally, there is confusion in the citizenry and the dais as to what the purpose and function of the city council and the city government are. The council is not here to oversee and micromanage staff. Our function is to set policy and provide general budgetary oversight. The city government is here to ensure that construction codes, health and public safety codes, and fire codes are adhered to for the protection and safety of all in Lompoc. The city government does not manage the school district, nor does it directly create jobs other than those within our service providing or deny businesses directly. Our top three issues are a large budget deficit with no new revenue generation, public safety staffing concerns, and failure to maintain city-owned infrastructure. Reducing headcount does not increase revenue or improve services, but instead, unfortunately, reduces services. Without adequate revenue, we cannot properly fund our public Without adequate revenue, we cannot properly fund our public safety staff. That means a continued shortage of traffic safety and gang activity enforcement. It hampers our ability to retain highly trained personnel, losing the investment not once, but twice after training and qualifying costs are factored in. Not only do the electrical lines and water pipes need upkeep, but so do three hundred acres of parks. And, once a modern convenience, it is now necessity to upgrade and improve our broadband as a full city service.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, question number two, and we're going to start with the third district on this one. And this is a pretty long question, so I'm going to read it to all of you. It has many parts. Some city residents have described past budget discussions as somewhat divisive, pitting staff against the decision makers. Others have written about a perception of micromanaging, which has not been productive. How will you approach budget discussions and how do you propose to raise the necessary money to fully fund our public safety departments and other city services? Besides the marijuana tax, which is on the ballot, what ideas do you have to generate more income for the city? And we're going to begin with Mr. Starbuck.
That's a long question.
It is. But you have it in front of you, I hope.
Yes, I do. I just, I'll make comment on here. There is a little bit of a, people have discussed and people have said, but when you're sitting here and you're doing it, it's a little bit different.
Oh, yeah.
I'll say that the budget discussion was a little bit painful because it was hard for some, for us to get through to staff exactly what we wanted to do. Tax money is brought in as citizens. You expect some services for your tax money. Closing parks is not one of the ideas I like. Unfunding museums is something that I don't think we should do. There was many, many things on the table and this went on for several months, just to keep basic things that you like to have available. I truly believe that as a city, you have to live within your means. To go out and ask for more means that you, the citizens, will have less. It's an imbalance that's not right. We have to do the priorities that are right. We are not undermanned, you know, by nine people in public safety with fire, et cetera, right now. There are always a floating number of people in public safety, transiting, et cetera, et cetera. The, currently, right now with our new city manager, Mr. Throop, there's already beginnings of discussions on priorities for the budget. That will start again in December. And I really believe that, in my last twenty seconds here, that filling city hall is not the course that we need to take this budget coming up, but putting more boots on the ground, people working in the parks. There's more people above the people in the parks than there are people working in the parks.
Okay. Thank you. And now, Mr. Cuthbert.
So, one of the reasons I got back involved was because I have heard a lot of the division and as someone who has watched city hall and local government for more than a decade, I'm kind of disconcerted. So, the perception of micromanaging, that goes back to a prior council as well and a former mayor. And so, is perception reality? Well, I think so. And in politics and public service, you got to look at the perception that you get from the public and act on it as if it's a real thing. And if the perception is wrong, leaders change that perception. But I think there is some reality to it. And I think micromanagement and being, you know, we hire professionals to give us advice and as leaders are, it's not that we need to judge their advice and I think, for the most part, rely on their advice. Study the issues, know the issues, so that when that advice is given, you can judge its appropriateness. So, on city council, I'm going to listen to the community, I'm going to listen to the professionals that work for this city, and I'm going to be looking for those back to basics. And, you know, maybe we have to spin off some things like the building department or the museum, but it's better that than face, you know, the potential bankruptcy or letting the city to continue to deteriorate for lack of basic service to save things that really only serve a small group of people. So, I'm the type of person who sees the forest and I think the city staff sees the trees. And I think between that and leadership on the community, we can work together and make a better future for our city of Lompoc.
Thank you. Okay, now, we're going to come down to this end of the table and Ms. Osborne will answer this question.
The most recent budget discussions were absolutely divisive. We lost our city manager, assistant city manager, and deputy city manager as direct and indirect fallout of the process. I concur that micromanagement is not productive and it was an unfortunate outcome of the previously mentioned budget process that certain council members took it upon themselves to micromanage staff. I will approach budget discussions exactly the same way I approached the last budget discussion, using a fair and collaborative method balancing the needs of the city with the wants of the citizens. And unpleasant as it is to hear this, we will more than likely require increased or new taxation, but that's okay, because as adults, we recognize that paying for the most important things is not always pleasant or painless as an experience. Identifying additional revenue or novel sources of revenue are important to consider since we only have a cannabis tax on the ballot, which, by the way, I pushed for prior to being elected and demanded it be brought back after a majority of council denied it initially being on the ballot. One area we should be recuperating revenue from is short-term rentals within the city limits. Anyone who rents a room or their home on Airbnb should hold a city business license and pay transient occupancy tax or hotel tax as we know it. New revenue could be generated through civic crowdfunding platforms for public parks, new maintenance, new signage, even beautification. This is different than a privately run foundation that is not answerable to city council or the public in its spending oversight. These platforms partner with cities to create funding campaigns that the public may donate to and support projects they are passionate about and provide clear paths to the use of those funds and their results.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mosby.
City budget. Let me start off by saying, I'm not a rubber stamp for city staff. It's my job to ask the tough question, while some people think the tough question's rhetoric. I don't. If everyone remembers, the budget started off last May with a proposal of bankruptcy or three new taxes totaling nearly five million dollars a year, five hundred dollars per family. The budget was, as it was revealed to us, could not be balanced without new taxes. It was even proposed by city staff and recommended by our current mayor and my opponent to defund the museum, the Chamber of Commerce, the Victims Advocate Rape Crisis Center, C-3H, human service support, and even the funding for school crossing guards. After four months of very productive discussion and the correction of millions of dollars in mistakes and over requests, the budget was balanced by three of us on council, working with staff with no new taxes, support for all the nonprofits, two million dollars, and I'll say it again, two million dollars in public safety raises, and no reduction to city services. The most recent budget deficiencies have arisen due to the spending of nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars by one department. This was not in the budget, was not authorized by council, and has jeopardized the city's balanced budget. With respect to the second part of the question, the budget was balanced with all the necessary money to fund our public safety departments and other city services, except for three PD positions that were traded prior to budget being presented to us to help offset the current needed raises. To answer the last question about generating more revenue to city hall, the answer is to keep our community sustainable, growing through annexations and infill development and the advancement of vision of new industry. And if elected as your new mayor, I will continue to work even harder to keep a budget balanced.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mosby. Okay, Ms. Sherman.
Hi.
Hi.
I really don't care about past personality conflicts in our, in our city council and the gridlock that has been created by our current council members. What I'm concerned about is the future of this city. I am the president of an HOA. I've been there for eight years and we have dealt with a balanced budget, customer issues, HOA fees, and our place looks pretty darn good. I'm very proud of that. Now, as for funding, my golly, that's a whole different ballgame. We need to fix our parks. We lost our dog show. We lost our color thon. We need a sportsplex. I hear people on the street as I walk by, they say, "We have no place for our kids to play." Well, we have parks, but we don't have A1 parks. We want a city, we want a sportsplex that people want to come, get excited about. They want to bring their, we want tournaments here. They want to say, "By golly, I was there." And word of advertising is saying, someone, someone is saying like, "You know, I was there. It was really cool." That's free advertising. What can I say? Now, this past week, we had shop Lompoc, shop small. What a great idea. We have so many small businesses in our community and a lot of them aren't advertised. How do we promote small business in Lompoc? I don't have all the answers. I don't know. I didn't even know that half of these businesses existed. We need to, we need to promote those small businesses. How do we do that? I don't know. I don't have all the answers. But I tell you one thing, I'm willing to hear you out and hear all your suggestions. That's what I have to say for now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Vega.
I have to agree. The divisive atmosphere for city budgets did not look productive. It didn't make any of us feel any better. I think that it was a tug of war that was something we wished that didn't happen. I would say prior, from my research prior, looking at previous council budgets and budget sessions, it looks that there were always transparent budget hearings and budget staff with staff to figure out where we're going to go. At the workshop, each council member talked about what they felt was important in the next two years and the council reached a consensus on each council member's ideas. The staff presented their ideas and the council voted on them. I don't believe that we, or I do believe that we could have held a more transparent budget workshop and, so, actually so that the city manager thought the city needed. His most recent budget had five million dollars in new administrative costs and three tax increases. He sprung it on the council without prior discussion and said the city would go bankrupt without it. The new utility tax and sales tax increase had been estimated to cost every Lompoc family, as the other council member had stated, over five hundred dollars, and then worked with council and staff to pass a balanced budget with no new taxes. In recent years, Lompoc voters have repeatedly said no to tax increases. I fulfill my campaign promise of no new taxes. I will vote to return to the workshop plan for beginning the budget process, which worked so well in Lompoc for decades. In December, I voted for the largest public safety pay increase in recent history so we could stop losing staff to other agencies. To bring businesses and jobs to Lompoc, we must resolve our housing shortage, which has caused ridiculous rent and home price increases. I voted for the Bailey Corridor projects and support Burton Ranch Housing Project. New jobs and homes will bring tax revenues to the city to fund future needs. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, and that's the end of question two. So, now, we go to question three. How do you propose to provide for future growth in the city? What are your plans to provide for adequate housing in Lompoc? Where do you stand on infill or annexation? What are your plans for infrastructure? How will your ideas support our number one industry, agriculture? And we're going to begin with the two mayoral candidates and we'll begin with Mr. Mosby.
Future city growth. Annexation is one of the major avenues for our city to grow and prosper. I believe that once the owners of the properties in the infill areas witness the development in annexed area lands, they will begin developing themselves. When we finally see new housing being constructed, we will have the movement of people from existing housing moving into new housing, which will open up the residents they moved from and will get the circle of housing moving again. With respect to infrastructure, the city has already anticipated this growth. Our electrical enterprise is capable of providing three times as much power as they currently sell. Our water plant is capable of generating two and a half times much water as they do on a daily basis. And our wastewater plant is processing less than fifty percent of its capacity. Our landfill is in excellent shape and with new recycling requirements, the life expectancy of our landfill will continue well into the future. With respect to the last question and statement, while agriculture is a very important industry, as a percentage of employment, it ranks fifth behind administrative, sales of food and serving, cleaning and maintenance, and employs about the same as management, education, production, construction, and extraction. All jobs are equally as important, whether it be agriculture or any other in our community. With respect to agriculture, currently, the federal government is paying for thirty million acres not to be farmed, and the agricultural land that is slated for annexation is within the quarter-mile notification zones around the schools.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Osborne.
First, the scope and breadth of this question could lead to several hours of discussion. Growth can be defined in many ways, but I think we should consider it in two, expansion versus improvements. Infill can be the right answer for the appropriate project and has the benefit of not requiring expanded utility reach and beautifying dilapidated or abandoned properties, both of which have positive impacts on our quality of life. That said, greenfield construction often results in lower total costs and can include an increase in population, which in turn drives an increase in utility usage and revenue to the city. Annexation, on the other hand, should be based on the owner or outlying standalone community that wants to join the city and change from agriculture to housing or businesses, or just to the improved services the city can provide. Respecting private property rights goes both directions, so honoring those who desire to place their land in trust for agricultural preserve rather than annexation is just as important. Secondly, let's be absolutely clear. The only government expected to provide and manage housing is the county with public housing. Our job is to approve plans and developments and hold those constructions accountable to the state and federal mandates that we are passed through agency for. The city can incentivize companies to move to town and drive the need for housing, and these new residents could increase the demand for those forty homes scheduled to be built, but, you know, it needs to be profitable enough to do that. So, no company intentionally builds a project anticipating a financial loss. And finally, as many of you know, I fully support and understand the agricultural community here and, as a matter of fact, respect those property rights of those that want to farm or annex or build. So, let's look at that. In fact, two years ago at this time, I was the only candidate who recognized cannabis as absolutely an ag crop and an extremely profitable crop, some say, almost as profitable as strawberries.
Thank you. Mr. Vega, your question.
As far as future city growth, no new housing project has begun in Lompoc in the last four years because former city leadership delayed projects even after specific votes by council to move projects forward. There are only three significant infill projects in Lompoc and one is, one is replaced by the CHC Health Center project, currently under review. We've all asked CHE, or most of us have asked CHE to come back and pay their fair share to support public safety. One other approved project has design issues which have caused at least five developers that looked at it not to move forward. City staff has worked with the third, the Burton Ranch project across from Ellen Hancock College since 2013, to make changes to move that project forward. Now, remember, we are the sixth most compact city in the United States, so we will have to annex for our future housing and job needs. The Bailey Corridor projects, which have been delayed for more than fifteen years, will help fill those needs. I voted to move those projects forward. The two proposed Bailey Corridor projects contain both new housing and industrial space. The industrial space will provide space for the jobs for the residents of all the new homes and provide a buffer with the adjoining agricultural fields. Lompoc has a diverse jobs mix, including aerospace, agriculture, manufacturing, hospitality, government, medical, and retail. I support helping each industry with its unique needs. I work to have a city staff and city policies that assist all types of businesses. It is especially important that the city council, senior city staff, important that the city council, senior city staff, the planning department, and building department work together to help existing businesses expand and new businesses come to Lompoc. Our new city manager, Jim Throop, who's sitting over here on that side, just in case you don't know that, is very focused on making this happen every day at the city of Lompoc, and I look forward to supporting him. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Sherman.
I would like to see Lompoc become a destination city. I don't have all the answers for all the problems we've got going on here. What I do know about Lompoc is that we seem to have as, an excessive amount of low-income housing. Please don't think I'm not, I'm against that, but I think other communities like Solvang, Yulton, Santa Maria, they should step up. Lompoc has over 26% of low-income housing in this county alone. What does that do for us? Not very much. I would like to see a more moderate balance of little bit higher in, income housing so we can get some revenue for the city. I hope I'm not wrong about that. Let's make sure we don't lose any of our agricultural land to urban growth. If I'm elected, I would like to approach big ag companies, our farmers, our landowners, and see what their concerns are. I don't see a lot of that represented here right now. Also, if my, if I am elected, may I suggest this? Well, this may be off the topic, but I've seen some of the council meetings on video, and I don't like what I'm seeing. I, I see city council putting their programs forward. I see public forums behind us. I would like to see the public put forward first. I'd like to see the city council meetings cut a lot shorter. I work, I can't stay up till 11 or 12 o'clock at night for their agendas. That is one of the things I want to see go away. Thank you for now.
Thank you. Mr. Cuthbert.
I have to agree, shorter meetings would be great. Now's a good time to start. Also, I'll agree that this
Yo.
I've seen that clock almost get to 2:00 at meetings, but at any rate, this question also has a lot of different aspects to it, but my typical get-back-to-basics thinking, I'd like to mention that there's anecdotal suggestions about how to grow the economy. And an anecdotal, anecdotal question is one whereby, well, it sounds like a great idea, it must be able to work. Well, about eight years ago, there was this, the CALLED Report, which stands for California Association of Local Economic Development. These are professionals that came into our community. I think we spent about $16,000 to get their recommendations. Well, the recommendations weren't very specific because we don't know specifically what we need to do to bring, bring in the community. It's not just a matter of asking companies we think might be good. We need to research this community, find out what fits in this community. If it's call centers, it's call centers. If it's, you know, an aerospace museum or whatever. But we have to research these things in a broader perspective and start down that trail to attract new businesses. And from economic development then spawns all these other things, including creating more housing. So, infill has been a limited success over the years, and we're going to have to look at annexation and expanding the limits of the city. Big developers are not going to come in and create that housing and those jobs, but we have opportunities also with the wind farm creating jobs, and that's, that's, that's a possibility. The racetrack, the drag strip was a dead end from the beginning, but it was still driven by anecdotal thinking and the belief that somehow because it's a good idea in one person's mind, something that would serve a small part of the community. Thank you.
Mr. Starbuck, thank you. Mr. Starbuck.
A lot to cover here real quick. Growth should match inflation. Lompoc has never done that since the 70s. We have been behind, so you want to know where the money isn't, it's been in the lack of growth. Infill and annexation, yes, we do need both. I would tell you right now, the current projects that we have approved will not help us in the city as much because of the fact, I'll give you an example, Summit View Homes. All the utilities, with the exception of trash and electricity, are going to go to Mission Hills. We will not sell water. We will not receive sewage, so our bills will remain the same as they are. That's what's happening with Burton and everything else. We need some annexation here that ties into our utilities. Infrastructure, we're at the point now. Our utility enterprise funds are healthy. We can start the infrastructure repairs. We know that our wastewater is in dire need of some big-money repairs here in the city. Electric is already doing huge, huge infrastructure repairs in the city right now. Ag is the number-one industry. I don't know. It seems like low-income housing is our number-one industry. I will concur with that. Everybody else in the county is at 8% to 11%, and we're at just about touching 30. Ag businesses in town, sure, we have a cooler, you know, we have a seed mill, we have wine, but schools are a big, big business in here. Look at the largest employer in the city, I'd say would probably be right at the school, district, prison, and the base. So, do we need houses for them? Yes. That's why they're all moving to work at.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, now we'll go to question number four. This is another one that's pretty short, right. "How will you ensure that the city continues to provide services and funds for the homeless after the project to remove them from the riverbed is complete? Describe the city's efforts so far and explain what agencies you will work with to solve this problem. What progress has been made so far on dealing with the systemic issue of the homelessness, and what are your ideas as a prospective council person for the next steps?" And we will begin with Ms. Sherman.
I knew it. Well, I'm aware of the homeless issue. I'm hearing people talking about, "Oh, they're creeping in our back alleys. They're leaving our, they're leaving their needles on our bike paths. They're doing this, and they're doing that." But that's not the answer. The city of Lompoc has created that triage center, which has been kind of a godsend. It's helping people move forward. We seem to forget that homeless people are still people despite that label. You see someone on the street, they're, they have a blanket on them, and they've got a sign saying, "Give me food, give me money," and we kind of walk by them. That's kind of sad. We've lost our humanity. And, uh, I, I've kind of thought of that about myself, but we have a big issue. The homeless issue has been here for years. It just didn't happen overnight. The riverbed is just one, one step in trying to help homeless people. Why can't we get a multi-agency here in Lompoc, something that's permanent, to address the conditions and the issues of the homeless? We have, homeless people have so many issues. They are drug addicts. They've got substance abuse. They've got health issues. They've got mental issues. We need to be able to help these people, and if we can't do that, this, this problem's going to continue, and it's not over. We have to be patient because it's been here a long time, and it's going to be here a lot longer until we can resolve this issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vega.
I personally have taken a, a walk-through with the chief of police and see the awful conditions that these people are living in, so it's also a health hazard issue. First, I want to remember, everyone to remember that the city receives no funds for the homeless issues. All social service funds go to the county of Santa Barbara. Second, any city spending to help the county with their social service responsibilities takes funds away from the police, fire, parks, and other services funded only by the city. I so support helping the county with its responsibilities whenever we can, at cost we can afford. The current riverbed relocation is a good example of bringing resources together. In the riverbed project, the city has brought together Santa Barbara County Mental Health, AmeriCorps, Mission United, Coast Valley Detox Center, Good Samaritan Shelters Bridge House, ACT Group, and Home for the Good, and planting a seed. We have chosen to be the lead agency and use some of our limited funds to help the homeless and clean up the unsanitary conditions in the riverbed. The city and the residents of Lompoc have chosen for years to provide support for three shelters to help those in need in Lompoc. One of the recent causes of overcrowding in existing homes and homelessness has been the huge increases in rents resulting from four years of no new home construction. A second cause is drug abuse and alcohol abuse, which the county is working to address. For our part, the city has and is helping the homeless find a home by connecting them with family, friends, and programs. We have a Lompoc police officer assigned to just helping the homeless, homeless. Everyone in Lompoc can help by not giving cash to the homeless, which simply provides for a homeless lifestyle, instead of making donations to the Bridge House, Mark's House, and other local charities that help the homeless. Lompoc is a very giving town, but we need to give our gifts to organizations that make a difference. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Starbuck.
Well, I, I'll reiterate that the city does not have a social services division. That is straight county. What we do have is $80,000 out on this project right now, $40,000 for a triage center, $40,000 for public safety overtime on this. We're going above and beyond as a city government, I will say that. Riverbed cleanup is still undetermined. We don't know, we won't for a little while, what's going to happen. Efforts so far, I, I think that the city went above and beyond, obviously, with the evictions and the triage, dedicating one of our police officers to nothing but homelessness, and working with the county and volunteers. Agencies, it's here. Mental health, county social services, we have lots of local groups. Planting a seed has always come up. C3H, we pay to belong to that. The, the only steps that we can do after this is all done is to continue the enforcement of the riverbed, you know, continue to take people that are on private property and businesses out of those and get them to where they need to go, and counseling and referral for those that do desire. We can help in that way.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cuthbert.
Well, back in 2000, I worked for the Census Bureau in Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo Counties, getting ready for the homeless count, and I got a very intimate knowledge of what homelessness is, and a lot of that's been already mentioned. A lot of the people are there for economic reasons. Sometimes it's mental health and, or alcohol and drug abuse, and that's very true. They're desperate people, and I have a lot of compassion, but that compassion has to be also kind of measured also against the, the public. I've had two bicycles stolen. I've had the inconvenience of, you know, people in my alley in the third district. So, I felt that. I was also a, a case manager at Mark's House back in 2003 and '04, and I've been down into the riverbed twice with the Santa Barbara County homeless count. So, as far as that's concerned, I have, I have a lot of knowledge and compassion for those people. Now, there's been a, some problems and with the, the riverbed cleanup, but the worst thing would have been to have done nothing. And we're beginning to address an issue that needs to be addressed, one in a sense of compassion, but also the inconvenience and the clutter. Now, the triage center's doing something besides just getting homes because it's a much more complex thing. 50 people have been served so far, and that's about half of what the estimate was of the people in the community. A lot of them need to get off drugs and alcohol. A lot of them can actually find housing by going back with family members who will accept them. So, a lot of, pardon me, a lot of the counseling going on there is really getting people to get connected with their families, get reconnected with the community. So, it's working, but there's a lot more as we go forward. But let's not go back to the days when people were coming out. I work at the Home Depot, and I can tell you for sure, there's a lot of less traffic coming through there, and that's a good thing.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Osborne.
Currently, I'm the city's appointed representative on Home for Good, which the county-wide funding collaborative for homeless, which was formerly known as C3H. In the two years I've been a member, we've transitioned the committee, C3H, to Home for Good, from talk and research to proactively identifying funding and new approaches to addressing homelessness issues. Locally, I've provided, I have participated in many of these meetings with the local service providers, the faith-based community, and the local nonprofits currently servicing the triage facility. I am very proud of those organizations and individuals who are working so hard to treat those in need with respect and dignity, and I thank you all for doing that hard work. While people like to simplify homelessness into a single issue of not having a safe place to live, people arrive at homelessness from many different paths, as already mentioned here this evening. And locally, it's exacerbated by only having 15 beds available for mental health problems across the county. Currently, the city staff strives to work with the county to provide the necessary funding, housing, and health services needed, as that is the county's responsibility. The city is finalizing its own safe parking program, and while it may not address the issue of the chronically homeless, our city zoning process is nearing completion and allows for construction of tiny home communities. This is an opportunity not for more Section 8 low-income housing, but rather for low-cost, affordable homes to be constructed for ownership. Reducing cost of construction and maintenance is really important to reducing the barriers. Regarding riverbed cleanup, this is being done to ensure public health and public safety, not to solve the homeless problem. I expect the county, as the continuum agency of care, to apply for the new funds being made available, because they are the only ones who can, and I will hold them accountable, not only to provide the money to what we're doing, but to improve services across the county and reduce the burden on Lompoc for all of us.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mosby.
Yes. It's important to understand that the major pass-through agency for homelessness funding is the county of Santa Barbara, which spends tens of millions of dollars addressing the issue annually. I believe that the best solution is to not turn a blind eye and to demand that the people who are in need of homeless services get help. We must keep assisting, as we do currently primarily with public safety and community development staff, to identify the people and their needs and assist those people in getting their current, to the current services that are funded, such as Good Samaritan, New Home for Good, Transitions Mental Health, Coast Valley, and many of the others. There is no single solution to homelessness. The many people I've sat down and talked with, our experience homelessness, all have different reasons for how their situations have evolved. As an example of how I was able to assist with an unmet need, I worked with the city of Lompoc staff to increase the Colt bus service to the Good Samaritan Shelter and reducing the amount of pedestrians walking across the Robinson Bridge, Highway 246 Bridge. Homelessness is an ever-growing issue with no one-size-fits-all solution. We need to continue our assistance, as we have in the past. With respect to financial services, the city of Lompoc has not budgeted for an ongoing financial assistance for the triage center. The lead agency and the agency that receives the primary funding for this, again, is the county of Santa Barbara. As your next mayor, I will make sure we continue to work with the county and other local agencies to make sure we are acting proactively instead of reactively, as we're doing now in the river.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're ready for the final question. And we're going to start with District 3 for the final question. It'll be Mr. Cuthbert first, okay? And the question is, "What qualities do you possess that make you an effective decision-maker? What do you think is the most effective way to promote Lompoc regionally and nationally?" And you have, each have two minutes.
Well, you know, in any government, personality qualities are very, very important, how you make decisions. For me, I mentioned, let's look at the forest and trust the staff to give us an idea of what the trees are, but I'm pretty much a very basic thinker, and I like to keep things very simple because you can act on simple things. And that's not to say that you can oversimplify. It's very complex. It's been mentioned here about what our government can and cannot do. We're not a charter city. We don't have executive powers. We basically vote on ordinances, as recommended often by city staff. So, to me, I, I, in a, in a sense, I personalize these decisions, meaning that, you know, what does this mean to me? What does this mean to people? What does this mean to us as individuals and as a group as a whole? And, you know, what are the overall impacts? I, I judge a lot of issues by who is really interested, and we get back to the, the drag strip. Maybe one or two percent of the people in this community were interested in the drag strip. And so, but a majority of us, through the city and our taxes and so forth, paid that seven hundred thousand dollars to go nowhere. That's one example. And with the homeless, you know, I've got some ideas on that, and it's a human reality. And I'm glad that's progressing. But to promote this city, essentially, I'll get back to the called report. We've got to know what our city is promotable here. I know that for a while, we were getting tourists actually coming here to just come to a regular town. We're paying the Chamber of Commerce a good deal of money to promote us, and we see a few magazine articles. Our wine industry is something that we could put out there. But this is a regular town. It's not like a Solvang, like a little mini Disneyland, and there's a lot of qualities of this community that we can use to promote ourselves. And being just a bunch of regular decent folks, I think is one good thing. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Starbuck.
Could you repeat that whole question again?
Well, sure, sure. What qualities do you possess that make you an effective decision-maker? What do you think is the most effective way to promote Lompoc regionally and nationally?
I got it now.
Only two parts.
That's easy. Well, obviously fiscal strength, I think, is one of my probably bigger traits, as far as that, you know? Working on naval ships forever, there was no delay. There was no excuse, and staying within budget was key. I've got a very deep commitment to the citizens in this city. I just, it's there, and it's not going to go away. Common sense. Sometimes it's best to just take a breath, step back, and look at what you're trying to do or what is happening. I'll say that we've got to do something to provide for our kids, our grandkids, and future citizens. We'd need to provide a standard of living for them, hopefully better than what we're providing for ourselves currently. And I like Lompoc. I share that attitude, and people like people in Lompoc. We always get commented.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mosby.
I'd have to say that the dedication that I put forward to my job, to do my due diligence, to go through the two-to-three-hundred, four-hundred-page staff reports sometimes that come out, and to read every page and not just try to wing it, as well as the institutional and historical knowledge that I have of this city, and I'm one of the people who would actually sit there and read some of the old EIRs from the seventies to educate myself about the historical commitments that the city made, as well as commitment. I am committed to this, to this job that I did as council, and as mayor, I'd be definitely even committed more so. And I'm willing to do the, well, ask the tough question. I'm not willing to let it pass through if I see something. And during this last budget cycle, I only had to go as deep as I had to. I was willing to stay at the top mark, but I dug deep, and I found millions of dollars mistakes, errors, and otherwise. This is a simple example. If we had approved the budget as written, we were also approving a capital improvement plan, that it did not get vetted, and still to this day has not been vetted. But if we had approved as what was presented and what was proposed, we would have presented a capital improvement plan without a thorough discussion. As an analyst, I'm one who truly and deeply digs into the numbers, and I have been working with staff, and I found just recently a three hundred thousand dollar error that made it look like we had less money than we truly have in the general fund. I guess the final thing I have is the love I have for this town and its people, and their willingness to do what needs to get done.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Osborne.
I think one of the best qualities I have is the fact that I have lived somewhere else, in fact, many different locations, and I realize the value that Lompoc is as a community. It gives you all of the needs and necessities you want from an urban environment as a full-service city, and yet, it's only eleven square miles, and it's quiet at night, and you don't have traffic as you try and make it across town. And as I like to tell people, we're a four-hour sit from LA or a four-hour drive to the Bay Area, and we get to enjoy both the urban lives around us and the big city, but not have to live a big-city lifestyle. So I think first and foremost, it's appreciating your community and taking ownership of it. And I want the rest of our community to do that. I don't want to hear anyone else put Lompoc down and as a resident, join in in that discussion. I think it's really important, as a leader, to take ownership of your community, take pride in it, and expect those around you to do the same thing. I think another important quality is realizing the difference between being a manager and being a leader. Our responsibility on council is to be visionary and look forward and identify ways that our community can improve itself and move forward and provide opportunities, not just for ourselves, but for the next generation. And finally, doing the hard work. I agree with Mr. Mosby. This takes time to do. It is important to do your homework. It's important to understand what we're up here doing and the hard decisions we're being asked to make on your behalf once you vote us in. That being said, to promote us regionally and nationally, one of the things we have to do is start respecting our staff, the knowledge they have, because they can help us promote our community better and help design ways to attract people here at all levels, whether they want to just visit or they want to join us and really appreciate the beautiful community we live in.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Vega.
My experience as a business owner and being a former union member for Johns Manville for many, many years, I was a member of the International Chemical Workers Union. I've been an owner, I've been a manager, I've been where I had to be diverse in my personality by dealing with people that didn't quite agree with me. I think my experience has grown to a point where I hope you all see value in seeing what you've invested in, because it takes a lot of strength to come up here and sometimes change your mind on an issue that's so important to the community, and not many people are willing to do that. Most people that pick a platform, they stick to it, and even though they stick to it, even though it may not be the correct way to do it, that's the way it is. So public comment's very important. I am listening. I see everyone here. I hear everyone. Sometimes I went home, and you guys might have thought I didn't go out the front door, but I went out, and I left, you know, after a decision that wasn't that popular. I feel that we don't address, and I want to address, is the fact that we have not incorporated our youth and all our families and all our decision-making and our planning moving forward. I think Lompoc would be, is growing to a point to where if we don't include our youths, actually include maybe an ROP, some sort of a facility within Hancock's realm, so we can compliment people that can't go and get a four-year degree, but incorporate and teach skills to this town, I think that would be appreciated and expected. I think we deserve to raise the bar within ourselves. I think we deserve entertainment and recreation. I think that our outreach is a little bit narrow by going out to Santa Barbara and finding out what Santa Barbara can bring to Lompoc, so we can have the amenities that we're proud of. So I hope you see value in voting for me. It's been a long road here, being from sitting up straight, not shuffling my papers, making eye contact. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Sherman.
Okay. Well, I've listened to our other council members, and they all have great things to I live, I've been in Lompoc for fifteen years, and I like where I live. Why I'm running is because I am concerned about this community. I would like to see more progressive things going on. I would like to be, I would like to hear people saying like, "We're coming to Long Co-, Lompoc," I'm sorry, I've got dry mouth, "because of..." How do we create that excitement in our community? That's a big question. I don't have all the answers, not by a long shot. I would like to see flowers. We, I remember years ago, and I've been here, what, I think fifteen years, and I remember seeing the American flag, all flowers. I do believe on the base of, oh, I'm terrible on directions, but out there, on Seventh, on Seventh and, I believe, One. Where is it? Where have all our flowers gone? This city is known for its murals and its flowers. Where are they? Why can't we just throw some seeds on the side of the highway, have wildflowers growing? Why can't we do that? Why can't we be proactive on what we're bragging about? I don't see any flowers in Lompoc. I do see some, that some of our, our, some of our, oh, heck, I'm losing my words, I'm sorry, some of, some of the agencies that are, have been decorating H. God bless them for doing that. And there are people that are looking after the pots and putting cactuses out on the Bank of America, on Vons, and on our major streets. But that's not enough. We need a lot more. We can do better. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Now, I'm going to give you some instructions. We're going to take a ten-minute break in a minute, but I want you to be sure you have your cards. If you need another card to write on, we have those available. We're going to take a very short ten-minute break, but I'm going to have you applaud right now, so applaud for this group.
How do you do this? How do you manage? How do you manage all this?
No, it's not.
Okay.
According to you.
Everybody ready? Give them the deal. Thank you. Okay, we have about 20 minutes, maybe 25, for questions, and then we're going to have one-minute closing statements for the candidates. So, this is for all of the candidates. If the city of Lompoc is over 40% Hispanic, why do you think there are only a handful here tonight? What can Lompoc do to engage the Hispanic community? Do you think going to district elections will really help? And we'll start with Mr. Mosby.
Well, I believe the stats were about 52%, but I think it'd been appropriate if it was broadcast bilingually. It would've helped out and assisted. I know Robert's a wave. But a lot of the outreach, it's not just that, but if you look at the demographics, we're also missing a lot of the youth that aren't here as well. So it's just outreach in general, all the way around. But again, bilingual approach would have been important. I'm not sure if district elections is going to stimulate more of that. I know a lot of the people, a lot of my friends are Hispanic, and a lot of them are still working right now. So as a lot of our town, when you have 6% of the town committing for jobs, they're just getting home right now and tucking their families in. So I don't think it's a separation of that. I think it's all the way around.
Okay. Ms. Mosby? Or Ms. Osborne? Ms. Osborne?
I won't hold that mistake against you, Diane. It's a long evening.
It's getting late.
Long evening. The 51% Hispanic are disenfranchised because of the fact that predominantly they're working two and three jobs. They're juggling who's taking care of the kids, whether or not they have family here to actually support them, or they have immigrated here alone in order to provide for families back home. One way to engage them was the hope that districts would reduce the cost of running an election, and that has huge benefits. And I think in the future that will happen. But unfortunately, being on council is a financial loss. You either have to be silver spooned, retired, or willing to take a loss on your personal income and have a wonderful supporting husband like I do, who's decided that it's okay for me to make local government a personal passion. So I think what we need to do is find other ways to open the doors, show them how easy it is to be a participant, and then welcome them.
Okay? Thank you. Mr. Vega.
I think probably if I had invited them, they would come. That was a joke. Okay, guys, never mind. So, no, no, but basically, the concept of districts and trying to empower some of the people that were a little bit out of touch, I think, may be a factor that we can all work on within our districts. Districts, we think, that's only for voting for an election, but I think we're going to have to immerse ourselves on the smaller level so that we can get more of a consensus within our groups. My unique district is predominantly Hispanic, with a mix, as I explained, with older homes and more fixed income. So we're hoping to improve the attendance here. I think the outreach to people in power, to people that we would love to have be a part of this group for our decision-making is part of our goals. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sherman?
Well, walking the streets of District 2, I have found a lot of interest. I've seen people, I was walking down one street, and one young man came up to me and said, "Are you counting who are in houses?" I said, "No, I'm worried, I'm being concerned about city council." We have people who are scared to vote. We have people who can't vote. We have people who don't want to vote. How do you entice people to vote? A lot of people just don't care. A lot of people are scared to vote. I don't know how to bring the Spanish community into our fold. I think we need to be more approachable to our Hispanic population here. But that's a whole 'nother education. And I am done for now. Thank you.
Mr. Cuthbert?
Well, unfortunately, there's a lot of apathy in the Hispanic community, especially among the new immigrants. So there's a cultural thing that we would like to see overcome. And of course, these meetings be more inviting, more Spanish-language involvement, even in Tap TV. There's a lot of different ways to approach it, but I actually speak very good-bad Spanish, and I'll try that with Mr. Vega someday. So I identify with the Hispanic community mostly along the lines of working class. I'm running for city council with 75% less people to contact, voters to contact, and this is not just a boon for minorities, it's a boon for somebody like me. I'm working class. Even though I have a degree from Cal Poly, I don't find good employment here. So I'm working retail as a manager. So this is a much more contendable. And the change in case law in California has a lot more to do than just with minorities.
Okay. Mr. Starbuck.
Well put. Well put.
I don't think that district elections are going to help engage the Hispanic population or any of the minority population. Look at our own people here. How many young people are in this room right now? Young families. Me. So I think that most people here, you know, they don't come, they don't engage because they don't feel that their voice is recognized, that it's cared for. So they just sit home and watch Monday Night Football tonight or something, you know? So it's just a matter of getting them out, getting interest. It's always a big subject. Walmart.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. Okay, question number two, and we'll start with Ms. Osborne. The election in November will result in a vacancy, either in District 1 or in District 4. How should the vacancy be filled in order to be both transparent and fair?
Well, I wish that we weren't in a budget deficit, because the fair way is to have a special election. Unfortunately, that is extremely costly, and I don't think that we as a council will make that decision to make that investment. Secondly, I would like to see the rules changed, that if anyone decides to run midterm, that they must resign, in order to have that position appointed and filled by the rest of the council that is still there, rather than creating a safe seat. I personally only chose to run because of my counterpart also being a safe seat, so it's, either way, it's a safe seat. But had I had better community involvement and others running, I would have continued to sit on council in my seat, because that's the commitment I made to four years. Finally, I think one of the other options is for the person who ends up in the mayor chair and vacates a seat. One option would be to allow that individual to appoint somebody to replace them that follows their similar politics.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Vega.
I think, within the candidates that run, we probably should take a harder look at some of the people that have actually run for council, to see if, and many of them are on the popular side. We've made different decisions in the prior years, and sometimes as you grow and you gain more experience, you see that being fair would be great. You'd like to see, get somebody there that has worked hard also and is immersed in all these, meeting the community. So I think probably take a harder look at being a little bit more fair in the process. It doesn't tell us one way to do it, but I think that's the way I would like to see it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sherman?
You will have to forgive me, but I really don't understand that question.
Oh, I'll read it again, okay?
Okay, I appreciate that.
Okay. The election in November will result in a vacancy, either in District 1 or District 4. How should the vacancy be filled in order to be both transparent and fair?
Okay, well, I'm still not quite clear on that, about being transparent and fair. Fair as being voted by the people who want to have you in their district, and as for transparent, that sounds like, I don't know what that means, to be honest with you. Transparent, to me, is being kind of cheesy, kind of see-through. I'm not that way. I am solid, and I am approachable, and that's all I can say. I don't know anymore. I can't fake an answer that I don't have an answer to, and for that, I apologize.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cuthbert?
Well, I've been through two of those processes, and I like Mr. Vega's idea of picking somebody who's actually tried to get on city council. You learn a lot in campaigns. I learned a lot. There's people out there who are already interested in local government, and you see them, they run for city office, or they're on commissions and so forth. But in the two processes I went through, people had never, ever engaged in the election process, got appointed. One was a great disaster, and I remember a surprised look in the audience, like all of a sudden, and I won't name particulars, but I think it needs to be very, very transparent, and not just somebody who's never, ever been seen by the public before, getting on city council.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Starbuck?
Well, this issue has been hashed before numerous times, and it's always come back to the council appointment. It's probably not a perfect system, but it is equitable, and it is transparent. It is done here on the dais, it is done in front of the whole city. I would probably be very inclined to agree with, if you're going to run for the mayor seat, you would probably surrender your council seat. It's become almost a norm at this point that we do this, and it's put the council in a position every election to have to appoint. Animosities are gaining on that, and it creates a lot of saber rattling for the electeds.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mosby?
We had a recent discussion at council about this, and I believe the stepping down of a council person because of the appointment was something that legal said that probably wasn't justified to do that way. I think the appointment process does work. It is a two-year appointment. It's not a long-term appointment. It's not the best, and if we were in better financial situations, we could go out to the special election. Without a doubt, all transparency should be out there. I put everything on the table when I was appointed. I know there were a number of other people who were wishing for that same appointment seat. I think one thing that should have been brought up at the appointment is my opponent, who was the paid campaign manager for the mayor, Bob at that time, that was never disclosed. And on the 460 forums, it was definitely there, that the mayor was having his paid political consultant trying to be appointed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, third question, and this will start with Mr. Vega. What is your opinion concerning the cannabis industry in Lompoc? Both pros and cons? Taxing growers and sellers? Question mark.
I believe the way that it was handled was done in a professional manner, with ad hoc committees and multiple people giving their opinion and treating them just as another business entity. The city was looking for a revenue stream in the beginning, and then the people that were presenting their business model were actually very professional. They weren't exactly the stereotype that everyone else had kind of labeled them, so I think that that was a great revenue stream. I think, once upon a time, when prohibition was in place, it was probably very similar to this. Many times that we, when we allowed them to come in, we did it with very rigorous, it was a rigorous process to make sure that everyone was protected, secure, there weren't going to be people just laying around out there and getting high and whatever. So that was a misconception. So to be treated as a business owner, I think it was a positive move. And then the revenue stream, as we have a tax referendum coming up on this, will create more revenue for the city. So treating it like another business is what our goal is.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sherman?
Well, cannabis is here to stay, whether we like it or not. I believe it should be taxed. We get taxed on gas, we get taxed on alcohol, we get taxed on cigarettes, so why not cannabis? Medical and for recreational use. There's not much more to say about that than this. As I said, it's here to stay, we need to regulate it, keep it away from our kids, but by golly, we need the money, so let's tax it.
Okay. Mr. Cuthbert? Thank you. Mr. Cuthbert?
So the people of the state of California voted for it, and a simple majority of the people of Lompoc voted for cannabis legalization. So it's our responsibility to regulate it, and I think it's an opportunity to tax it, because it's, you know, like alcohol and cigarettes, it's kind of a sin tax, and if people are free to use it legally, we should regulate it and we should tax it. So I don't know that it's going to be the cash cow that we're hoping for, but I think we do have responsibilities as municipality to go along with what the people have voted for. And the proportion of the adult population that wants to use cannabis should do it in a legal framework that we can all live with.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Starbuck?
Well, like has been stated, the people voted it in, and the will of the people prevailed here. One of the things about doing the legalization in Lompoc and the sales tax that's going to be voted on, and some of the other components of this is, is try and get it out of the alley. Try and make it a legitimate business here, unlike stilling whiskey in your garage or something. Looking for the job growth and property value increase, and I think we're already seeing the property value increase, which on the other hand is bringing a small downside to it, because some of the smaller businesses can't compete with some of the cannabis industry. But it's not the government's place to step in on that.
Okay. Mr. Mosby?
Can you read the question again?
Read the question again?
Yes.
What's your opinion concerning the cannabis industry in Lompoc? The pros and the cons? And taxing growers and sellers? Question mark?
Okay, after reading Prop 64, a very lengthy document, I realized there were two very important parts about Prop 64. One was to not create monopolies, which is what we've moved forward with, with the free-market mentality. The other one is to reduce or eliminate illicit activity, which is one of the reasons why we went the direction we did. Currently, right now, the cannabis industry is opening up over 100,000 square foot of industrial buildings in town that were underutilized or vacant, bringing somewhere between 500 and 1,000 new jobs to the community. And I felt that it was more important to get the job component to this town than it was to tax it. And many times, if you overtax or overregulate, you actually destroy the jobs. In fact, that's one of the good ways to kill it, is to overtax it.
Okay, Ms. Osborne?
As mentioned before, I spoke here two years ago and said that if it was the will of our local voters to vote in favor of having a local ordinance and taxing cannabis, I would move forward on that. So I participated in the ad hoc, along with Councilmember Vega, and we drove forward an ordinance that treated the industry as any other industry. Unfortunately, there was a discussion that moved it towards free market, and free market is good, and I accept that, and didn't want to hinder the ordinance, but the four permits would have reduced the impact that some of the industry is having on pushing other businesses out. The second half was the struggle over council agreeing, finally, to move forward on taxation. The industry itself came forward, said we understood this was part of the ordinance and that we support it, we just want it to be reasonable. The industry participated in those discussions, and we provided an ordinance which is quite reasonable compared to a lot of surrounding communities, or even the state, and they have come out endorsing it. So I appreciate the industry for taking up that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have time for one more question. Unfortunately, only one. Okay, we have time for one more question, unfortunately only one more, and then we'll have closing statements. Okay, and we'll begin this question with Ms. Sherman. What industries would you like to bring to our valley, and/or what industries would you like to further develop? So what industries would you like to bring, and/or what industries would you like to further develop?
Well, I would like to see Lompoc, as I said before, become a destination city. I would like to get tourism into this city also. We lost the dog show, we lost the color-thon because of our lack of maintenance on our parks, which is sad to say, I know there's no funding for it, so how do we handle that? What do we do to improve our appeal? What makes people want to come to Lompoc? If I'm a tourist and I'm traveling and I'm going like, by golly, why do I want to come to Lompoc? Our beaches are closed from May, no, I'm sorry, March to September because of the snowy plover. I can't disagree with that, I know that's an environmental issue, but that's one, one, that's one darn good beach that we can't use. We can't use a lot of other things, because there's so many regulations going on here, but I, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cuthbert?
Well, years ago, you know, we have the fiber optic loop going through Lompoc, which is really, it's like a little gold mine out there. Server farms are where Amazon lives, and a lot of the large internet companies, and server farms can be anywhere in the world, but when you're close to that loop, it's a lot cheaper to start working those. Light industry's been a target for a lot of times, and that's something I'd like to see look into. We have high school graduates leaving town, light industry has a lot of jobs with a minimal amount of training you can get into, and of course, in the third district, support the wine industry. As a tourist destination, you know, we do have some limousines going around, we have people coming to the, I'll call it the wine alley, rather than a ghetto, but at any rate, a lot of people really object to that, and it sounds, it doesn't sound good. So the wine industry and tourism, and there's no really limits to that, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Starbuck?
Well, obviously, any kind of manufacturing jobs we could get in the city would be a boon to us. The abundance of recreation that's currently available here, there are many forums that we don't capitalize on here. I'm going to tag on the beach, it's a shame that as a coastal city, we don't have a beach. We're the only city by a beach that doesn't have its beach. And one of the things that's happened here, there's two things that are just naturals for this community. One is the weather, and the other is missile launches. I mean, when people came for the mission to Mars, there was people from everywhere. It's the easiest draw to get people here, come watch a missile go to space.
Thank you. Mr. Mosby?
One of the things I've done and continue to do in my private business is bring business to fruition. I personally have designed, signed contracts with many, many businesses and companies that are in buildings that I own and operate. Going out on a limb, something that we really could do, we need to do to bring to our communities, within short distance, we have UCSB and Cal Poly San Luis. Both of them are impacted in their local areas, and I think we should go out on the limb and do what we can to attract a satellite campus here, either for UCSB or Cal Poly San Luis. And we have land inside the city limits, right up here by the prison, there could potentially be an opportunity to do that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Osborne?
So first, I want to make sure that we don't gentrify our community too quickly and push out the amazing artists and musicians that not only live in our town and create in our town, but play and perform in our town. Having last lived in Texas 18 years ago in Austin, that's one of the beautiful things I love about our community, is the artistic nature and the ability to support them. So I want to find ways to expand the venues, make larger venues available for them to perform, not in LA, not in San Luis Obispo, but here at home. I think it's really important to identify high-tech businesses that could utilize the access to the broadband, dark fiber that runs through town, in particular, the ag industry. It's moving towards more high-tech, and the difficulty of finding employees, and there's an opportunity to embrace the ag around us and look at the next level of ag. And then finally, I agree with Councilmember Mosby so much that I actually work and am personally involved in trying to attract a four-year degree program, and have had discussions with Cal Lutheran about relocating a satellite here in our community.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vega?
I'd be an advocate for multi-use event center. I think industry and all that falls within those realms. For us to have an event center that attracts entertainment, sports venues, incorporates the family, is not all-encompassing on just alcohol, but actually fun and recreation, I think most of us, we've all been kids, many of us have forgotten what it's like to have fun and grow, and we all grow up too soon. I'm not ever going to grow up, I think we still want to have fun, and I think we should advocate that for the younger demographics of our community, which I think is, needs to be referenced. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, now we're ready for their one-minute closing statement. And we're going to begin with the mayoral candidates, and we're going to begin with what I'm calling candidate B, and that would be Ms. Osborne.
Mr. Mosby and I recognize the same issues exist, but we have very different approaches on how to address them. He wants to lecture you on solutions and implement via top-down management. He wants to tell you stories about decisions I've made, or positions I may or may not have held, and if you want those answers, I'll be happy to talk to you personally. But I am not going to have a campaign that's got personal attacks and lies built into it. I believe in real democracy and embrace a grassroots, bottom-up leadership that encourages anyone and everyone to participate in governing our community. I believe Lompoc is an amazing city, and we should be investing in ourselves by improving our parks and building broadband infrastructure. I believe we need to fully support public safety so that you are safe and want to be here. If you desire leadership over lectures and want a capable, credible, and ethical mayor, I ask for your vote on November 6th.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mosby?
My name is James Mosby, I'm running for mayor. The reason why I'm running is I didn't want my opponent to run unopposed. She made much the same statement. Coincidence. My opponent, there is definitely a difference between the two of us, and during the last budget cycle, my opponent, not hearsay, it's on the record, voted to defund the museum, the Chamber of Commerce, the Victims Advocate Rape Crisis Center, C3H, Human Service Support, and even the crossing guards. Voted for taxes, not only one cent sales tax, but also potentially a tax that would have been a 6% utility tax, two-point TOT tax, and a half percent sales tax. There's definitely a difference between the two of us. As far as ethics, remember, when I put everything on the table when I was running to be appointed, and Councilmember Osborne never disclosed that she was the paid employee of the mayor at that time, and wanting to be appointed. Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to go to District 2, and we'll begin with, let's see, that would be Ms. Sherman.
Hi. I have to thank the AAUW and the community for coming out tonight, for hearing all of us, and all of the spiel that we've done tonight. I believe in the potential of this city. I thank Mayor Bob Lingle for his endorsement as a candidate for city council.
Is your mic on?
No. I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I apologize. I thank Mayor Bob Lingle for his endorsement for city council. I'm a new kid on the block, I have a lot to learn, and I will admit that, but I'm a fresh face, and if you vote for me, what have you got to lose? Thank you!
Okay, Mr. Vega?
First of all, before I run out of time, the last couple of council meetings, I moved forward some action items, which I swore I was going to make something happen here, so we moved forward by asking the city manager to bring forward the chicken ordinance back by popular demand, and also the last council meeting, I asked him to come back with some sort of a plan to bring back the swap meet at a location that's still to be confirmed and looked at, so for the people, we've done that. I voted to stop unneeded increases in your utility rates, and I will continue to hold the city accountable for its own policies. I support new housing projects in Lompoc in order to prevent giant increases in rents and home prices. I will continue to work to bring new and better paying jobs to Lompoc so we can bring our commuter workers home. To keep Lompoc safe, I supported the largest pay increase in decades to retain our public safety staff. The previous city administrator made choices to spend money in other areas that resulted in cutting maintenance for parks and sports fields. I will work to bring our parks and sports fields back to life. Thank you. I hope you guys will vote for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and we'll begin with Mr. Starbuck.
Mr. Cuthbert never got to start. I just wanted to say, thank you Diane, I just wanted to give you, you know, what a great turnout for, you know, an event, you know, for a forum here. Thank you all for coming out. It's, you know, caring and make your voice heard, you know, vote and participate in your local government, it's the most effective way. It matters when you come in here and you speak at the podium. People do listen. Thank you, and vote, and I like Lompoc.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cuthbert?
So, my name's Robert Cuthbert, I have 30-plus years here in Lompoc, this is where I raised my family, my three daughters. I'm not so far from being a homegrown man, I graduated San Ynez High School. At 35, I got a social science degree at Cal Poly, and my concentration was complex organizations. I graduated magna cum laude, and I would have done better if I had, I got AB in the rest days, but at any rate, in 10 years on the Public Safety Commission. So I come here already with some experience with government, some knowledge of how organizations work, and I have a proven track record as an activist, and I hope I get your vote, and let's get some transparency in government, let's get back to basics, and let's move forward as a community with things that work. And I'd like to thank the mayor for his support, Mr. Hamdal, and Roger, former council member, for your support, and all the other people out there that are supporting me. Thank you so much.
You've been a great, great audience, right? So now you can clap. Okay. Thank you all for coming, and don't forget to vote, okay? Good night.
All right.